Welcome to today's city council meeting. Today, Monday, March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. And now I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Present.
District three, Councilmember Otero.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand up for the invocation by Dick Connors, Series First Baptist Church. And then I also, I wasn't sure if you had the notes on the moment of silence. If not, I'll read that afterwards. Go ahead.
Thank you. Turn me with a word of prayer, please. Heavenly Father, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, I ask your blessings upon tonight's council meeting. I pray also for your grace toward the men and women who will conduct the city's business tonight. We thank you for our city, this place where we live and work, and pray that you provide for our needs and welfare through the business discussed tonight. Watch over our leaders, give them your wisdom, knowing that we all give an account to you for all we do and say and how we treat our fellow man. We pray for our law enforcement officers as they protect and serve, that you enable them to serve at the highest level. Grant them safety, along with our members of the Fire and Rescue Department. As a city and community, may we learn to please you, to care for our neighbors, and to conduct our lives and our business in a faithful way. Amen.
Please take a moment of silence since we honor the passing of Mary Fenton, retired City of Series employee. Mary served as a secretary in the Police Department and also later in the Finance Department for fifty-two years. Okay, now the pledge. Today, we have a presentation, Women's History Month proclamation. So we will have the City Council go to the podium in the front. Sir Robin, Sir Sir Opnomus will be receiving the proclamation. And are they here today? Welcome. Please stand up there with us.
And Serena and I are going to do this together because we're both women on the council. And we definitely want to represent women, representing women, especially during Women's History Month. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historical contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless records and unrecorded ways and.
Whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home and.
Whereas American women have particularly important in our establishment in every charitable philanthro- I'm not going to say that word, and cultural institutions in our nation and.
Whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable. I'm sorry. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement and have served our country courageously in the military and.
Whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolish- abolishment movement and emancipation movement and industrial labor movement and civil rights movement and other movements, especially in the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all and.
Whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and studying, study of American history.
Now, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Lopez, who's behind me, the mayor of the City of Series, and behalf of the fellow council members, including Vice Mayor Daniel Martinez, Councilmember Jim Casey, Rosalinda Vera, and Serena Otero, in acknowledgement, the significant role played by women whose courage and vision inspire hope and possibility for today's women to make today's history, thereby proclaim the month of March twenty-twenty-five as National Women's History Month in the City of Series.
Hi, I'm Shelley Madrigal. I am currently the president of Seropomus of Series. We are honored to accept this proclamation for recognizing and declaring March as the Women's History Month. Thank you all for inviting us here today. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Citizens Communications. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution two thousand seven one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council any agenda item, subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. We will start off with our representatives first.
It is nice to be semi-agendized, I'll tell you that much. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Justin Farkas. I have the honor and privilege of representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis in the Twenty-second Assembly District, just coming by for a robust but brief legislative update, some of the things we have going on in Sacramento. First, starting with something that you folks got to start with in your meeting today, the kickoff of Women's History Month. We have one of our former representatives, Ms. Rosalinda Vera, who was our Woman of the Year, Assembly District twenty-two, two years ago. And this year, we had the privilege of bringing up another individual who has made very significant impact in our community, Ms. Erica May Ignacio from Stanislaus County CEO's office. She's one of the assistant executives there. And anyone who has had contact with her, who does work with the Latino Chamber of Commerce, with our rural communities and the municipal advisory committees, understand what amazing impact she's made here specifically in the county, but really in Assembly District twenty-two. So we're really grateful. We had the opportunity to honor her this week, well, last week, I guess it'd be now. And for legislation, the Assemblyman was able to introduce eighteen bills this legislative set, this legislative year, I should say. We have a thirty-five cap, so we'll have about seventeen remaining to bring over next year, twenty-twenty-six. But this year, obviously, very focused on public safety, given the Assemblyman's background, dealing with issues that are related to victims of abuse crimes, especially children, dealing with matters like SVPs. If you have been keeping up with the news lately, there is an active placement happening in Stanislaus County of a sexually violent predator just in the outskirts of Turlock. So we have some legislation addressing that, the issues arising from that placement, specifically in reaction to some of the issues that have been going on in terms of public schools and daycare facilities not having similar protections from SVP placements in proximity to their establishments. Also dealing with a number of issues like background checks for individuals who are working with children with behavioral health needs. That's also in relation to a similar issue that we saw here in Stanislaus County a few years back. So really district-focused, but public safety-focused as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll start with the yellow cards. Mike Engels.
Good day, gentlemen and ladies of Series City Council and all the support services. I come before you to observe and report what I find a little bit confusing on the Office of Emergency Management and the Series Dispatch mixture. I'm opposed to that because I don't see leadership at the county level. That's good enough for the Series merge. One of the indices is one building has three flagpoles and no American flag in front of a United States government building. What kind of leader does that? What kind of leadership is that telling me, a taxpayer? Now, the OEM building got a big flag. It's torn and a little raggedy. And I asked about it. I said, why don't you guys replace it? Oh, it's on order. That's a GSA thing. Whoever has a checkbook at the county level, they're not doing their job. So if Series goes into an OEM operation with the county, who's the boss and who's in charge? I know they need help. But who's leading that formation? The leadership model of the county is only half of a V-model. Like a civilian counterpart, it's top-down. And what we observe, what I observe, working with the county as a contractor, I'm appalled. There is no bottom-up. What I observe and I say goes to deaf ears. And that's why I'm here. I'm tired of the excuses. And if you bring Series Dispatch to a county operation, it's going to be a nightmare because I see the American flag posted here and other places in the county, you will not. Are we offending people? Also, with the lack of the V-model leadership that I'm used to coming from the military, we also have a support chain, which I don't see. I can't make heads or tails. However, the support services at the Series City level is awesome. You guys are protecting our backyards. You're protecting our people. You're making things happen. And if you go to this OEM nine-eleven dispatch service center, where are you going to park? There's no room. Now, talk about room. There's the old Series Hospital that has a dilapidated building that ain't in use. Gut that thing out and use it. We need to look creative, a more creative solution. But on the leadership side that I'm telling you about, where is the flag? People come and say, I'm looking for Kaiser. I'm looking for this. No, this is Stanislaus County. But where's the flag? I talked to the, I talked to the tenant activity, and I talked to the landowner. The land is leased. On this particular site, it's in Salida. Bordersline, Modesto, and Salida, it's unstuttered. If you want to drive by, you'll see the three flagpoles. I talked to the landowner and I said, is there any discussion on putting up a flag? No. Is there any in the future? No. We're not going to do it. So that's the organizational culture you're going into if you take Series Dispatch to the county level. That's what I'm saying. I don't think anybody's came at that angle for you, but I am. And why? I'm a guard. Ever talked to guards? We know a lot. December thirteenth, I was at the Series Hospital. And I blinded one of your drones.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
I guess that was the new sound we're using.
Well, I thank you for your attention. And I turn back the microphone to the next speaker.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. That was Jurassic Park. That's awesome. Thank you, Fallon. Great pick. Okay, so we'll go, we'll open this up to the public now. Please, anybody who would love to come up here and speak, more than welcome now.
Good evening, Council staff. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Melk Treeweiler. I've lived in Stanislaus County all my life. Our country will be two hundred and forty-nine years old this year. We have the greatest freedom on the earth. Yet if we're not careful, we could lose it. I'm going to read a quote to you from a past U.S. Supreme Court Justice, Robert H. Jackson. "It is not the function of our government to keep the citizens from falling into error. It's the function of the citizen to keep the government from falling into error. A democracy requires responsibility on the part of the citizens. To be a responsible citizen, you need to address the City Council and the city's staff. Our government begins with our cities. We humans think we're pretty smart. Each of us thinks, each of us thinks we know what's true. Yet no two of us agree on everything. You can fool the people, but you can't fool the laws of physics and mathematics. We're using up the resources that will be needed for our children and future generations so that they can survive. We, as our children's ancestors, must work together to preserve the best farmland in the world that we have here in Stanislaus County. You should also be aware that in the next fifteen years, California will need to fallow nine hundred thousand acres of farmland in the San Joaquin Valley. That's Turlock, south of Acre's Field. There's not enough water underground to irrigate. It's going to be taken out of production. We're going to be the only place with a good place to grow because our TID and MID ancestors had great foresight when they formed the first irrigation districts in the state in eighteen eighty-seven. That's a hundred and thirty-eight years ago. Today, we must save the best farmland in the world. It's worth the fight. I don't care where you go in the world, there's no prime farmland as good as we have here in Stanislaus County. This is because of the water that TID and MID gave us. It's because of the soil. It's all ninety to a hundred in rating. It's the best in the world. And because we have a Mediterranean climate here. It's a beautiful climate for growing. We must be conservationists for our children and descendants, since they cannot do this for themselves. We all understand we must have clean air, water, and food, yet we're not being good stewards. We're not conserving our resources. Please wake up for the sake of our children and our descendants. Unfortunately, there are people who want to make our county a bedroom community for the Bay Area. That is terrible. By working together, our children and descendants will look back and thank us for stopping the sprawl of Stanislaus County cities. Our cities can build on their infill areas by building up and not out, and by repurposing the blighted areas. And by building up, you can put up three, four, or five-story condominiums. We have very few condominiums. You have very few apartments here, too. And there's also, you know, many other ways of building up. But the most important thing is to remember that our children are depending on us. And if we don't stand up for them today like our descendants, I mean, our ancestors stood up for us when they did what they did for us so many years ago. So please, keep this in your minds. That's what government's about, doing the best for the future. And we'll be having a good meeting tonight because we're going to be talking about the six-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person.
Good evening, Council. John Warren, City of Series. I've mentioned this before, and I'm going to request again this evening that the chambers here be arranged so that the public can sit forward of the accordion doors. This building, according to Melk here, in this room, the acoustic system was designed for the people to sit up here forward, where we sat prior to COVID. This particular podium was up in the front there. The tables were pushed out a little bit further, and I think one more from each side. And then the chairs were in the middle for the public to sit in. There's not that many of us here tonight. As you can see, there's actually, I think, more than usually attend these meetings, which is a good sign, and I'm glad to see that. But for us to hear, especially when the council starts discussing things up there, because Mr. Martinez will turn sideways, sometimes Mr. Casey turns sideways because he's speaking to you folks rather than speaking out here to us folks. And that's just kind of a natural thing that happens. But the acoustics is bad and the, it has been mentioned many times. And money has been spent, but nothing has really happened that improves the hearing ability of some of the people in the audience. The younger you are, I think, the better you can hear. But when you get to be at my stage, you need a little bit of help. I can see like one, two, three, four speakers facing you folks there, but we don't have that out here, okay? Sometimes I can't understand the person that's speaking here at the podium, and I generally sit in the front row. So consider this and give it some thought again. Move us forward so the public can hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anyone online?
There are no hands raised online, and there were no emails received.
Okay. Citizens Communications is now closed. Moving on to conflicts of interest. Is there any conflicts of interest? See, and none. Moving to appointments to boards and commissions. Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee appointments. Fallon, you'll be presenting the sign-off.
Yes, Mayor. So Measure H is going to have three vacancies effective July first of this year. So staff will be going out the month of April to recruit for these three positions, and council needs to determine the subcommittee that will conduct the interview, which is tentatively scheduled to be held, I believe it's May twelfth. Thank you. So I'll turn it over to council to have that discussion to determine who will sit on that subcommittee.
I'll recommend myself and anybody who would like to volunteer. Waiting for the buttons to.
No, we're volunteering or we're asking for recommendations on who will sit on the, the interviews, but I would suggest maybe having this public so we can all hear just like what happened last time with planning commission appointment. I think that we need to all hear together who's putting in for these committees and make a decision together. So that's my suggestion.
So can you please clarify that?
So instead of having, appointing two of the council members to sit on the interview panel, we all sit on the panel in a public session and have them, we can conduct the interviews here.
Also, you're suggesting to conduct interviews publicly? We've ever done that before. Rose Linda, you want to chime in?
Yeah, I kind of want to agree. We kind of talked about this at the last one where we didn't have an agreement from the committee on the planning commission. And it's hard to make a decision on my end because I wasn't on the committee to say, you know, who should be on there and who shouldn't. Not that all of them weren't completely qualified, but it's hard when you're not in those interviews to make a decision in the event that the committee doesn't come to an agreement. So I do think it's important that, you know, there are members of the public that may have specific questions about Measure H or even Planning Commission and want to put, you know, ask those specific questions to make sure they're getting the right person to represent them as well. So, because those are, Measure H is their tax dollars. And I think it's important that everyone has the right opportunity and equal opportunity to make that decision. And I would agree with Serena in making it a, at least the interviews public and maybe then bringing a vote amongst the council, but ultimately having a public vote and public input. I think that's best, especially coming to our tax dollars.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City attorneys, is this something that we can technically do or will we need to keep it as a subcommittee?
I'm looking at the rules right now, and what I believe the process is, historically, it's been, and in the rules, it's that it's a recommendation by the mayor with a full vote of the council. That process doesn't inhibit the council from conducting an open interview process as long as the recommendation is still in line with our policy, which is the mayor makes a recommendation and the full council votes on it. But if the council's wish is to have a more open setting for interviews, that part would, that part should be okay.
Do we need to change the bylaws if that's the case?
No, the bylaws require that the mayor make a recommendation and the council vote on that recommendation. What has happened historically is that a subcommittee has been formed for interview purposes, which the mayor sits on and then makes a recommendation with input from that additional council member to the full council. But if you're looking at having an open interview process, that's fine as long as the recommendation is still coming from the mayor with a vote by the council. If you want to change that, then we'd have to change the rules. We have to change the rules and policies.
So question, then, would this be an agendized meeting where the packet of information with the candidates is going to be shared to anybody who attends the meeting?
Yes.
Including address, occupation, education?
No, so that, that along with the information that we typically would redact as part of the agenda that you would see typically for a recommendation before council, that, that personal information would still be redacted, but the entire application and information submitted by candidates would still be open and available, just as it has been in the past.
Would communication from citizens be warranted, welcomed, or would that be something that's closed off from the meeting?
If this is a open meeting, because the entire council will be here pursuant to the Brown Act, it would have to be open and subject to public comment and participation through public comment.
So anybody who applies would have to understand that they will be in front of more than just two members and that we have to interview in front of everybody else.
Correct. If, if you go down this route.
Interesting. Mr. Casey.
Not, not a lot of words. I disagree with my two councilwomen. It'd be a good idea to open it up. Thank you.
You said, you do agree or do not agree? You do agree, okay. Is there any way, are we going to at least have a process when it comes back? Like have the city clerk kind of set up the rules and how we set it up? And we're going to have to have the interviews one by one? And then at what point do we receive all the information? That will be just like a general, a regular city council meeting on a Thursday? Or will this be prior to a city council meeting?
It, it would be, however, the council wishes. It could, it could happen at a regular city council meeting. It could be a special city council meeting. The council, if you make, if you make it, if it's a meeting with all of you present and available, then the rule will be that we have to make the, the staff report and application information available to the public as soon as it's available to the council. So essentially, everyone will have access to all of that information once it goes live. So essentially, everyone will have access to all of that information once it goes live. Then, if, again, if the council wishes to go down this route, it would likely be a, it could be a, again, special meeting at the beginning of a regular city council meeting. And you'd have a process by which, ideally, you'd have the candidates all step out and then bring them in one by one to ask them the questions that you, that you select or however, whatever process you, you wish to set. And then you bring them in one by one. At that point, at the conclusion of the interview, you'd open up for public comment, get feedback, and then a recommendation by the mayor with a vote from the council on a selection for your positions, your open positions.
Is it required for it to be a special meeting or can it be agendized in our regular?
It can be part of a regular meeting.
So we don't, I wouldn't, I don't want to waste anybody's time. We just, it would be best if we just agendize it and then we just go through our meeting and then make that decision that day?
So in essence, what you could do is, like it is here right now on the agenda, appointments to boards, commissions. It would be a Measure H committee interview.
Oh, sorry about that. I might, I'm talking too low today. Yeah, okay, so if that's, I mean, let's just make sure that we, before we go down this road, that we are clear on what the rules are going to be. Should the decision be made today on what the rules are? Then to be clear so that we...
Since, since technically what we have agendized tonight was for more of a subcommittee selection, my recommendation would be to bring back this, bring this back as a separate agenda item to establish a process and, and rules that council can adopt essentially, since this is the first time that you're embarking on this type of selection process. And that way, it would be clear. That process would then be shared with every candidate because I think it is important to note for the members of the public that maybe they were, again, historically, maybe more comfortable in providing a one-on-one discussion with a couple of council members as opposed to it being an open session. It would be important for them, for the public to be aware that this would be entirely open to the public and subject to public comment.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. If that is the case, while, if everybody's okay with it, I would say that there needs to be a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you might have to open it up to the public.
That is correct. Thank you for the point of order. Let's go ahead and go to the public if there's any comments from the public regards this matter.
Good evening, council staff. As a from here, not come here person, and having been the city clerk here for 12 years, years ago, going before the public at a council meeting is how it used to be. I, I applied, well, actually, I chaired the Measure H committee when it first started. And when they did the appointments, it was before a full council and full community for people to come, comment, listen, see what's going on. So I, I agree with the ladies and council member Casey that that's how you move forward and make it a public thing. We all want to know where the money is going and what people are going to be a part of that committee to see how our money is being spent. Thank you. My name is Brenda Herbert, by the way.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name?
Brenda Herbert.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Warren, City of Series resident. I'll have to agree with Brenda and the council people that have spoken the affirmative that any process that is open to the general public for everyone to see what's going on and who's appointed to committees and how it's done is a good thing. I mean, if you have four or five questions or six questions for the candidates, then each member can ask a question, and we can hear the answers. And, and then if there's anything else that the public has a concern about, they can speak up. And I think it's a good process, is very, very transparent. So I hope you decide that is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
There are no hands raised online, and there were no emails received.
Thank you. Attorney, is this required a motion or just direction?
A consensus would be helpful so that we can establish a policy. And I looked at the rules a little bit further. There's, there's provisions for how applications are provided to the entire council and the scheduling of an appointment. But aside from that, there, there does appear, at least in these rules, to be the flexibility to make changes. In the future, if the council so wishes, you can make the rule clearer as to the selection process. So it could be by subcommittee or by an open interview process like this so that way we don't have any confusion in the future, if, if you so wish. Not required, but it might be something for the council to consider.
And on the topic of direction from left to right, consensus? Yes. Yes, from me. Entire council says yes. We're bringing this item to a future agenda. Thank you, Fallon. And thank you to the public. Okay, moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar considered routine in nature will be acted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted by, staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Is there any members that would like to pull an item? Oh, it was a Christmas tree that lit up. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to go left. Yeah, I'll start one, one in. So everybody lit up except for me. Vice Mayor.
Item 13.
Serena, Councilmember Serena.
Item eight and 15, please.
Councilmember Vera.
Four, seven, and, oh, you pulled 13, right, Martinez? Okay. It looks like it's just, four is a quick question. Seven, just reclarifying a question. And the rest is all housing element, which is already on discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Casey.
Item nine.
Item number nine. Go back to the council for, actually, to the public. Anybody from the public would like to pull an item that has not already been pulled? See, and none. Back to the council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve items one through three, item five, six, 10, and 14 of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Was item 11 and 12 pulled?
No.
So 10?
10, 11, and 12. Okay, so then 10 through 14.
13 was pulled.
10, 11, 12, and 14. Apologize.
Just wanted to clarify. A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Otero.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number four. Whomever pulled that item.
I did. I just had a quick question. I had just seen that there was some pricing regarding Shane Parsons shirts, and I was just wondering if he is able to offer us cheaper t-shirts if maybe we can look at maybe even doing a contract with him instead of outsourcing with a third party? Just trying to keep it local, shop local, and support our own local businesses, which I just, I think I emailed you that already, but I just want to make sure that, you know, I think if we can shop local, keep local, and if he's cheaper than the other company, I would like to see more business done locally. Thank you.
Members of the public, would you like to speak on item number four? See, and none. Go back for a motion.
Motion to approve item four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number seven? I wasn't keeping track who pulled which item, so whomever, item number seven. Rose Lynn, that's you? Councilmember?
Yes, thank you. I guess on this one, there was just a question I just wanted to clarify. I just want to see what the difference was versus the option that we're currently utilizing now versus this, and if there was a cost savings, and if there was, what the difference would be.
Good evening. Oh, good evening, Councilmember Vera. So the price is the same, however, the new company does it much quicker.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So when you say they do it much quicker, is it because they don't have the workload like maybe the prior company has? I just want to make sure everyone's being vetted properly and having a proper background check done.
Yes, they are solely doing the backgrounds for us right now. I don't, I'm not aware that they're doing for anyone else.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Active Chief, you said that they're much quicker. Could you give us a turnaround time of what that looks like and what that cost effectiveness would be?
So usually, it takes about three weeks for a dispatcher background, maybe four weeks for a police officer, and they range from $1,800 to about $2,200 per background.
Thank you, sir.
And I believe there was a cost savings of approximately up to $500. Is that correct, from what I gathered?
It's possible if they do it quicker because they get paid by the hour. So if it is quicker, if they would do it quicker, then it would be a cost savings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Going out to the public, any members of the public have any comments or questions on this item? See, and none. Anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Bring this item back for a motion.
Motion to approve item seven.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number eight.
Yes, so I did a little research into our previous contract for the CHP using the Series Police Department range. Looks like it started in 2016, and the last one was approved in 2022. The cost in 2022, I believe, was 2,400, and it's going to increase this year to 3,600. In reviewing the contract, my understanding is that CHP, they can use the range up to three days per month, which puts them at about 48 hours a month and 576 hours a year. If my math is correct, that's going to be about $6.25 an hour. And I'm a firm believer that firearms training is very critical in law enforcement, no matter which agency you work for. But I want to ensure that our city is not getting taken advantage of when we allow other agencies or entities to use our facilities. And I also want to make sure that we have a plan for the future also in possibly, you know, making sure that our police officers here have an updated range. So with, I do have a few questions. How was the $3,600 determined for this year's contract? And then when it comes to the insurance policies, what is required? Because I didn't really see that outlined in the, in the contract, the staff report. And I know it's a state entity, but I just want to make sure, like, we aren't going to fall into any liability. So that's, those are my first two questions.
So I could answer the first one. The way that it's figured for a CHP is they pay $100 a day. They have three guaranteed days a month, which comes up to $3,600. We could go back and look. That was based on what we projected off of the previous year or the previous contract of $2,400. We increased it, but I wouldn't be, I would object to going back and looking if we could increase that.
Okay.
As far as the insurance policy, I believe it's a $2 million insurance policy, but I'd also have to double check that. It's the standard that we, we ask for.
Okay. And since it is, as you mentioned, going back and looking at the costs and everything of what we charge them, you know, it is the Modestor Area Office that's using the range. But I would be curious as to what the other offices are getting charged for other facilities outside of our city, maybe doing a comparison. Because again, I don't, I wouldn't want, you know, our city to be taken advantage by some of these larger entities or agencies.
I did do some unvetted research, and it's very possible that they may have paid in the past maybe $5,000 a year. So there could be an increase there, and I would definitely be interested in looking at that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Otero, just a quick response on the indemnification requirement. So the standard terms and conditions included in the contract provide that CHP is self-insured, self-insured through the state, obviously, as the state agency. And they're agreeing to fully indemnify the city for any property damage or injury, including up to death, of their use of the facility. So it's a complete indemnification of the city.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Acting Chief, just a couple of questions. I think we talked about this in '22 when it came to us the first time. You know, is there plans on renovating that facility out there? Putting buildings out there, maybe giving the officers a restroom? I know currently they still use one porta potty they share for whoever's out there shooting. Like, is there plans moving forward to make that facility a little bit more modern?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. We are looking or working with engineering to upgrading that. There is, it's a large cost to run the utilities out to the range area. So we have collected some monies from the range rental, but based on the prevailing wage, we have to constantly reevaluate that. But we, we do have some plans.
Thank you, sir. And then I think I would agree also with Councilmember Otero. We should probably, I know we still have to open this up to the public, but we should probably pull this item, maybe vet it a little bit better, do a little bit more research, and then put it on a different agenda.
Councilmember Vera.
I basically am on with the same as Serena and Martinez. I think we should vet it and make sure that we're getting what the police department should be getting and we're not being taken advantage of, especially in the growing times that we're in and challenging times. And the fact that we do need to get it upgraded for our own police department. We need to make sure that they're not feeling comfortable with only using a porta potty. Our police department deserve better than that. So I am in agreement with possibly tabling this and bringing this back with, just to make sure that you're comfortable with the amount and that they're comfortable with the amount, that it's appropriate, and we're not being, you know, mistaken advantage of and we're getting what the city should be receiving, or what's appropriate.
Any additional comments in the council?
So this is a question, I guess, for the city attorney. Since it's gone this far, do we make a motion to pull it? Since it wasn't pulled before the meeting?
This item was pulled by Councilmember Otero.
Well, it is pulled.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Before we go back for a decision, members of the public? Comments?
Thank you, John Warren, City of Series. I do have a little bit of knowledge about what goes on with that type of contract because years ago I was involved in that myself personally. But one of the things to consider that the range out here after 10 o'clock at night can't be used. And most of the training or a lot of training for police officers, especially with firearms, is conducted after dark, during darkness. And so it's really hard to find a facility where that can be accommodated. And I know there's a noise factor here. When previous chiefs were here, if a shot was fired after 10 o'clock, the phone would ring at the police department the next morning with about a dozen complaints. So the, the range really isn't available to the departments that use it, that rent it from the City of Series for a lot of nighttime. The best time that they can do is during the winter months, when it gets dark at 4:30 or 5 o'clock. Then you have a little time between 4 and 5 to schedule your employees to come out to do the required training that's necessary for after-dark hours. But then you're limited sometimes by weather and so forth and so on. And of course, a gunfight could always happen when it's raining out there after dark. But you don't generally plan your training during inclement weather, and sometimes that's hard to do. So the facility really isn't available all, all the time. And that's something that to be considered when negotiating an agreement. But I do know that I helped negotiate agreements 25 years ago that were a little bit higher than this number here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? See, and none. Anybody online?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay, bring this item back to the council.
I'll make a motion to table this item until we've had a chance to let staff properly vet the amount.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
No.
Motion carries four one.
Item number nine. Who's item number nine? Is that you, Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Up, sir.
A couple of items. The first item is similar to our last council meeting. We're approving a budget item for next year's budget. And I'm not comfortable doing that, but along the same lines, a question, and maybe it's already being done. So when someone asks for a public information to be drawn, do we, and then the results, do we post that on our webpage so that the people know that this has been asked for? And then do we then post the results of what they've asked for? Is that part of this contract?
Thank you, Mr. Casey, for your question. So with next request, they do offer the option to publish the results of public records requests that are submitted via next request. Historically speaking, in past practice, is we have not used next request for that function. It is a possibility, like I said, and if that is something that council so wish to change, I do believe that would need to come through as I would imagine a referral item.
Okay, so now, now when somebody asks something and then we provide it, that information is only between the person who asked it and?
That is correct.
Okay.
When it's requested via next request, yes.
So some of you have more experience with government agencies than I do. Is that the common practice? And if so, what's wrong with the public knowing that this question was asked and this was the answer to that question? I think that the transparency of what goes on in government is, you know, in our city even, is sometimes questionable, like we're maybe hiding something. And I, I just feel like there's two points. The first point is I don't feel comfortable approving a budget item for next year. The second question that we brought up is if we're going to, why, the question is why can't we provide the information that somebody's asked for? So I mean, the communication has been brought up a couple of times on different issues. It's pretty important and maybe people will feel better about what we're doing here in this city. That's the reason I pulled it. The first reason is it's a budget item for next year. Why don't we wait to six months or we're going to have a, our budget would be approved sometime between now and July the first, make it a budget item, not pre-approved, $5,500. And the second part would be if we do approve the contract, that we add those provisions to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Otero.
Fallon, I do have a question. So if this item wasn't approved, what does that do to your current process?
If, if the item was not approved and it wasn't approved even in the upcoming budget and next request went away, went away completely, it would be pretty detrimental, not only on staff, but even the public in their ability to submit public records requests. Right now, the program provides a very easy, flexible way for individuals to submit public records requests at their fingertips. The program provides auto replies deadlines that both the requister and city staff are aware of. Not to mention, you know, over half of our requests are submitted via next request. If we did away with the program and we still received that amount of requests, we would be manually tracking them, which is extremely detailed and cumbersome with all of the different deadlines that are involved in public records requests. There's deadline, you know, when someone submits a records request, there's a deadline of when that's due, but within that timeframe, there's multiple other deadlines internally to receive information, to have legal review it. So it would be quite the undertaking to do that all manually.
And as someone who is very experienced with public records, I was looking at the numbers that were provided by you on the amount that you're getting, and I don't think that it'll be efficient, you know, for us to not use this program and provide to the public in that way, or even for staff to process manually. It would just take more time. We risk losing records that we may have already released. And just to clarify, Mr. Casey, right now with how the records are being released, if they're not on the public portal yet, the public can go ask for the same copy. So if a neighbor or somebody found out you did a public records request, they can go to the city clerk and say, I want the same copy of what was already released. I think that this program just makes it more efficient overall, better tracking. And the only thing that I would want to see is that using the system, you put all your releases on the public portal so that way anybody can go in and check what's already been requested. Plus, I think it's going to be easier on you too, because you may be able to refer people back to the portal.
Okay. Any other comments? Go out to the public. Before we go out to public, would you like to make a comment?
Just real quick, I need clarification. I don't understand something. You don't want to pass this because it's $3,988 now. You just approved background investigations at $2,500 a pop and we did probably 20 of those last year, which far exceeds us $3,988. And we just approved a canine that's going to exceed this amount with your costs and dog food and kenneline and everything else. And we approved that. And I was just curious, what's the difference?
I guess I didn't do my homework very well. This one just stuck out to me because it was something different. You're saying that all these other things we approved are budget items for next year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I stand corrected. I mean, I don't stand corrected. I've just, I apologize that I didn't do my homework. I probably would have pulled those as well. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Councilmember.
I'm sorry. No, Mr. Casey, I can appreciate your concern with this. And I think eventually, though, we are going to have to pay for this program because I wouldn't want to see this process be done manual, especially in an effort to make things more transparent. But I understand where you're coming from with your, the item being pulled.
Okay. I see that Martinez has stepped away.
We, well, first, we need action on this item and then we, we can skip the next one and then go back to that one.
Go to the public? Any members? Anybody online?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay, so in order for, I mean, maybe this, is there a possibility that Martinez might have wanted to vote on number nine as well? Should we wait?
If you want to defer voting on that item until Council, Vice Mayor is back, then we can do that and we can move on to the next.
There's two more and I know that he pulled number 13.
Right, so my recommendation would be if Councilmember Otero's pulled item 15.
As a matter of fact, there he is. Welcome, sir. Okay, we are on number nine, sir. Is there any comments that you would like to make?
No, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Bring this item back for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item nine.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Hi.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Mayor, one, Mayor, I hate to interrupt, one, one point of clarification. Councilmember Casey in pooling the previous item made a recommendation or a comment about utilizing the software's ability to post Public Record Act responses publicly. Since that was technically not on the agenda for consideration, my recommendation would be to have that be a referral item that you can bring up at the end of the meeting for council discussion.
Thank you very much. And before we move on, just wanted to double check, Councilmember Vera, would you like us to take a rest from break? Or was, I wasn't sure if, I kind of heard you say something of that's matter.
Before the closing element?
We'll go ahead and just, since it's seven, the seven o'clock, we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Getting ready to go, come back again? Or should I say, getting ready to start again? Okay. We are back. Item number thirteen. Vice Mayor, must you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a couple of concerns with this contract. I was wondering if we're gonna have staff take a look at it again. There's a few items on here that I've spoken with staff before. City Manager, and I was wondering if it's something we can pull, maybe extend the current contract now so that CYB continues to have access to it and can still have rec in their tournaments, their sizzle and blaze games, but go back and fix some of these concerns that we have?
You are correct, Vice Mayor. I mean, we can, we can pull this back. Go ahead and have the council pass a basic contract right now. Keep, you know, CYB moving forward and everything. And Joey and I could go and meet with them and talk about some of the issues might, that might have not have been covered in the contract.
Yes, there's a, there's a few issues, transparency, safety. You know, nowhere in the contract does it prohibit them from having outside food vendors? If they do have outside vendors, are they paying a permit fee to the city to do so? Does that vendor need to be vetted and prohibited to work in the city? See here that we're changing the lights from ten o'clock to eleven o'clock in the evening. Would that require an ordinance change to have the lights on that late? To have any sort of noise going towards eleven past ten o'clock? Have we done any impacts, any, any studies to see how that will affect the homeowners in the surrounding area at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night? And then also two turning it on at six in the morning for tournament prep? Does that, you know, was that done with community impact, any sort of studies? And then one more was, you know, when we do have tournaments, we only seem to have one access gate open for entrance. In case of an emergency situation, I feel more should be open so that people could escape if need be, instead of having one that traditionally we only have about half open because, you know, it's got a piece of metal in the middle of the concrete. So the gate only rolls halfway open. But just, those are a few things that I discussed with staff before, and none of it was addressed.
Yeah, we can reengage CYB and address some of those concerns.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, Councilmember Vera?
Thank you. Just looking over the contract, which is page one ninety on my agenda, which is items nine and ten. I had noticed there's large indentations on it, and I just didn't know if there were missing words or something that were in those gaps that maybe didn't come across. Because everything else seems to be formatted correctly, except for those two areas. And I just want to make sure there's not something that should be there that is being written in or something that may not be, or may be written in after it's approved by agenda when there's large openings like that, just kind of is a red flag for me as a notary. I'm just making sure every line is crossed. And so those are the two things I just wanted to know what was there? If there was a reason why the indentation or the gap there from the numbering was so large there?
I think part of it was had to do with the formatting. And we'll go through and make sure everything's correct before it's submitted again, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Terrell?
So first off, this has been a topic for a while now. And I just want to thank everybody who's been involved with discussing and working on this contract, because I know it hasn't been an easy one, especially when it involves our children and parents and our community. No one ever wants to increase fees, but sometimes it's needed to be able to keep up with cost of these different activities. For me, I've been a part of CYB for a while, and my children played CYB. I no longer have them over there anymore, but that's because they moved on. They've aged out. CYB is really a great league, and we do have a fantastic board right now. And I've seen the changes that the current board has made. There is experience, there's dedication, and the individuals who are volunteering their time truly care about this league. For me, I want to make sure that any recreational programs remain affordable in our city. And I know that it's hard on parents to pay for additional items that are needed to play a sport or participate in activity. It's also hard on the city to keep up with the changing costs. But we need to do our best to make sure that all of our children have access to facilities that are clean and safe at all times. As the, it looks like the fee is going up from, as I saw, I think it's twenty to forty dollars per player. I like to make sure that going forward, there's, you know, if this needs to happen in the future, it's future, it's gradual increases. I don't think we ever need to do a sudden increase and put that stress on parents. But I do have a few questions. In reviewing the contract, I just want to confirm that if this is Costa Fields allowed to be rented at any time? Or is that just a facility that we can allow our local baseball team to continue to use along with our local travel teams?
For, thank you for that question. For, for us, it, it's mainly for CYB, for them to run their organization, their tournaments, their practices. In order for us to be in the business, we would have to hire one full-time staff, equipment, drag, bases, part-time staff to, to operate. So at this time, I don't think it's feasible for us even.
Okay. And the reason why I ask is because, like, you just mentioned staff time, right? You know, who, if we had, if we rented this facility, who opens and locks the facilities? Who's liable? I know that CYB right now has staff that work there to prep the fields, things like that. So now if somebody's going to rent the field, are they gonna be asking for CYB to prep the field? Or now our city is going to have to pay our own employee to prep these fields? That's my concern too, because, I mean, we just had to, you know, outsource our contract for basketball this year, because there isn't enough staff in our recreation department. And there would have to be other, other things outlined, who cleans up? Who, you know, maintains things like that? So, you know, keep in mind that if we're asking CYB to do additional things, if we, if that becomes an option to rent, how do you pay, you know, are they paying their employees? Or are we having to pay our own employees? And there's one more thing. Give me one second, let me just review my notes here. I know there is mention, Councilmember Martinez, you were concerned about the gates being locked. I think that's a valid concern as a parent. I actually look, think about that with the schools right now. Every gate is locked in the school, and our kids can't get out if there's an emergency. So I think that's, that's very common. I think it does keep it safe by keeping a one entrance in, one entrance out, you know, and making sure that kids aren't running around everywhere. You know, you can kind of see who's coming in and out as well. With the gate, gate concern, we have to remember too that I believe there's been projects that were not completed for CYB. In the contract, there was a statement that "The city shall be responsible for maintenance and repair of the main structures within the complex beyond return day-to-day maintenance." The issue is, when we went out for, when the council, before I was on the council, there was ARPA funds that were brought up for Costa Fields. And there was some conversation about the funds being reallocated to public safety retention. But unfortunately, with that referral, it wasn't approved. I feel that in that situation, the public is misled. And the funding possibly went elsewhere to other projects. And that's why I say that I, I think the public was misled in that. But, you know, if the city is going to maintain, help maintain Costa Fields, it needs to be done and not, you know, just dangling, like, here's some money, but then pull it, and we're never gonna fix it. So maybe the gate issue would have been fixed with some of that funding.
Sorry about that. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joey, currently, does CYB sublease the fields out for other tournament rentals?
They don't sublease it. They have another person that comes in and runs, runs tournaments.
Councilmember Vera?
Thank you. And I appreciate your comments, both of you, because you guys are both more involved in baseball than I am. My kids were soccer players. So I guess one of my concerns that came up, especially with the safety, is what does the police and our public safety fire? In the event that there's an emergency, what does our chief, what does our fire captain want for our public? What is gonna work for them when it comes to getting to one of our children that have may have been hit by a ball or sprained an ankle or is bleeding? Or if there's a safety concern with a fight or someone who's intoxicated in public? I think ultimately, the safety of our children and our families do need to be priority. And I think what our public safety officials recommend is what we need to be following, those guidelines. And the CYB will need to make those accommodations. And if the contract, if that park is solely for them, that does raise some concerns, because I saw that we, in the contract, we're providing some toilet paper and other necessities. But if it's not something that we're even able to use, because I know in the past, we've had the Easter celebration out there with the Easter bank. But if the city's not even utilizing the park, how much of that responsibility for lights and gates falls on the city if it's strictly only for CYB to use? And the city can't even use it for an Easter tournament? And I think during Christmas, they had their own Christmas thing going on. And the music was overpowering our Christmas tree lane parade. And I think those are other concerns that we need to look at as well. And those are concerns that I have as well. And ultimately, it's gonna come down to what, for me, what, what our public officials think is best for the safety of our families.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional comments or questions? Is there any answers to the questions?
I can speak for the police department. It's a small enough facility that it doesn't matter if the gates are open or closed as, as far as vehicles. It would only matter that the officers would have access on foot.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional comments before I go to public? I'm sorry, fire, sir?
With respect to the fire department, anytime a call comes in, we're ready to respond. And for us, it's no more of a concern than any other operation that takes place in the city.
You know, just out of curiosity, Joey, what does the evacuation plan look like on site?
On site, so you have three main gates. And just going back to Council Vice Mayor's comment regarding only one gate open during tournaments, I think they do it secure, you know, make sure everybody's coming through one gate. But I think towards the end of the day, we talked about it, because I attend their meetings, they do open up the gates towards the end of the, end of the tournament. So they're collecting the fees for the fields.
Okay. Councilmember?
Just one question for the acting chief. Does the police department have keys to the facility?
I actually don't know the answer to that. I can find out. We, we have a key anywhere we need to, though, if we have to.
Thank you. I mean, yes, but it's offense, but I'm just thinking, like, you know, just, all the schools, you have, you have keys too, right? So it's all the gates and everything. I'm sure you can pry those open as well. You have a great SWAT team, so.
We, we do have the school key, and there is a master city key that the sergeant would have. I don't think the officers would have that, so that's something I could look into.
Thank you very much. Oh, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joey, is there an emergency evacuation plan on site posted anywhere at CYB?
I believe there is. I, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I believe they're by the restrooms. But I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I can double check tomorrow and get back to you.
Okay, and anybody from the public, we'll go out to the public. Comments? Oh, that's right. You had your yellow card, sir. George?
Good evening. My name is Jorge Araro. I'm the president for the series baseball. And just wanted to reply to the concern about the music during Christmas tree lane. I don't know where the music was coming from. At the baseball facility, we did not have music. Inside the tournament, we did, we didn't not have music that would alter the music from Christmas tree lane. Because during baseball games, they'll play music for thirty seconds between innings. And it's a speaker, it's a little boombox that seems scary. So that would not be the case. Not sure where the music was coming from. In regards to the gates, we do keep them closed, because unfortunately, the park that was just remodeled, we get a lot of gangsters, a lot of people that are kids on bikes. They have a challenge. The vice president of baseball is here. Councilman Martinez, when his kid played at CYB, he witnessed that kids will go in their bikes, and they will challenge. They will not stop by anybody, will go in their bikes through their facility. We had an issue that they run into a little girl. So that's why we keep the gates closed. It's more a safety concern if we have them open than if we have them closed. We always have somebody on site that has keys. Actually, most of the time, it's two people that have access to the keys in case of an emergency, so that we can open those gates. Also, we just wanted to, in regards to the tournaments that we run, it's, we're, we were asked when we took over the board that we would bring business to the city, money to the city, and that's what we've been doing. We employ about forty-eight, fifty people in a, during the year between umpires. Some of them have been your players at Central Valley, as you know, Mayor, that they come and they start working there at the facility, whether they're groundskeepers, they're snack bar attendants, they're umpires. Those are kids that are making money, so that's why we use that. Also, the tournaments that we use help us maintain the cost down for the league. If we compare our league to Bell Passy, which Bell Passy owns their fields, they don't have to pay the city the thirty-six thousand dollars, thirty-eight thousand dollars that we're gonna be paying you for the toilet paper that we're gonna be getting. They charge two hundred and sixty dollars per player. We charge hundred and eighty-five dollars per player. There's a late fee. If they don't pay on time, then there's a late, a late fee that increases. So that, those tournaments help us maintain the facility and maintain the cost down for, for the players, for the families. Last time that we were here, we were promised that the lights on field three were gonna be repaired. And that brings the ARPA fund money. We were promised that the gate on roadside, on the roadside was gonna be done, that the lights on field three were gonna be done. I submitted a proposal from a electrical company. Councilman Martinez told me it's going through. And next thing I found out, a couple of months later, that it had been pulled, that the money was no longer available for us. It is a safety concern for anybody who plays on that field when it starts getting dark. Like, right now, if you're on that field, it's very hard to see the lights, to see the baseball. Kids will lose the ball in the air. And again, bringing back Councilman Martinez, he's witness, or he's known of kids that he coaches that were hit on that field because of those lights. And every time we bring it up, it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done. It's been seventeen months, and nothing has been done. There is not a date line, deadline that says this month, you will get the lights fixed. On top of everything else, we do provide back to the city. We do stuff for the park. We have a company, the city paid about fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars on the renewal of the fields, reconditioning of the fields, because they were in pretty poor condition. And now we have a company, we have a contract with a company that comes every couple of weeks and is doing the maintenance on the fields. The fields are in very good condition. I would say, me being a coach, those are the best dirt-in fields that we have in the county. So we do give back to the city. We give, we pay for tree trimming.
Jorge, your time is up, sorry.
Okay. So, thank you, thank you.
Is there anybody else?
I'm Ismailan Tiberos, and I am the VP for Baseball for CYB. Our VP for Softball cannot be here today. Both Jorge and I are losing practice, he's actually losing two games to be here. I value my practices. I'm losing my practice to be here to speak on behalf of CYB. A lot of the things he was saying are things that I was already gonna say. But the one thing I wanted to comment about was our gate. They were talking about, that Mr. Martinez was talking about. So he was talking about how that gate only opens three or four feet. We, we did that for a reason, to, like Coach Jorge said, to control the, the traffic and some of the unwanted traffic that we don't want there. But what he didn't mention is that gate actually opens like twelve feet. Believe a fire truck can drive right through there if needed. So in case of an emergency, we obviously have that access to open. We always have people, at least two people there with keys. So if something were to happen inside the park, a bit of fight or something, other gates can be accessible and open. My biggest concern right now is the, the ARPA funds. We showed up here a couple of months ago, Coach Jorge and I, and we asked where the money was, where it went, where, where, where it was going, because we saw some improvements, but the lights, they are a big deal. If you talk to any one of our coaches, if they see they have a seven-thirty game on field three, they hate it, absolutely hate it. You cannot see the ball. And so that has been brought up several times. We've talked about it several times. The other thing is the bathrooms. We were told that there was already sinks purchased, I think, I don't know if it was urinals and some other items, and that they would be installed within weeks of when it was mentioned at our meeting, and we still have the same thing. I know the bathrooms are a little bit outdated, and I know that there's, or was funds available for those, and they're no longer available. And where are the, the sinks? Where's all the materials that were ordered? So that has me concerned as well. The, the other thing was the gate, the other gate. We also had enough money to do the gate on the roadside, similar to the other gate. And Mr. Martinez brought up that there's a rail there, and that rail is meant for the, the wheel to stay on the, the gate that slides. And we actually had to set it back. It was something that was brought up for wheelchair access. So we actually cut the, the rail back, I believe, four feet, so that it would be wide enough to allow somebody that has a disability to, to go through there without issues. But then there's the issue with the other gate too, that that was supposed to be done as well. And that was part of the other ARPA funds that disappeared. So we're here on behalf of CYB, the kids. Coach Jorge and I spent a lot of time working with the coaches, with our staff, with training, with umpires. And like he said, we spent a lot of time training these young kids, some of them that played at CYB, that are now young adults, to come back and give back to the community while we help them as well. We employ them, and I think we have a really good thing going. We don't want to see it messed up, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
John Warren, City of Series. I'm trying to remember what was discussed with the ARPA money and the, and the CYB who are there at Costa Fields. And my memory brings back that the cost of repairing those lights far exceeded the amount of money that was available. So my thought process is that was set aside and wasn't done for that reason, and the money was used for something else. I don't remember anything about the bathrooms and that. But I do remember discussion about the lights, and it had to do with the cost. It was very expensive to repair those, repair those lights. And I would like to mention one thing about exits and entrance, okay? In this building, all of these have to be open during business hours. We don't want people in a panic from the back to have to run up to the front and from the front to run up to the back to exit a building. Young children that are trying to get out someplace or, and parents that may be in a panic, depending on the type of emergency. You don't want to look up somebody with a key to try to open a gate when everybody's trying to get out of it in a big huff. So exits and entrance in those facilities should be open at all times, so people can come and go. If there's a problem with riffraff coming and going, then you need to have someone stationed at those particular spots to make sure that that doesn't happen. But I think for public safety, those, those entrances and exits should be open at all times that the facility is being used. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody else? Do we have any, anybody online?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay, I have a question for Joey. If, off the top of your head, how much ARPA funds did we spend? And what did we do?
I believe we have a total of one thirteen, one hundred and thirteen thousand left.
So how much did we spend?
We spent close to about eighty-eight thousand.
And what did we spend it on?
New gate, signage. I'm just thinking, going off.
Whatever you can remember.
Yeah, I know the gate for sure, signage.
Tree trimmings and field renovations.
Yeah, field renovations, that was our big one at seventy-seven thousand dollars. And then also tree trimming for about, I believe it was thirty-five hundred.
And how long have you been with the City of Series? Four years?
Going on four years.
I mean, there's some folks have been here longer. But has anybody ever in the last ten, fifteen years cared to even try to upgrade any, anything at CYB? Not until we brought this to the attention of the City Council with the blessing of the ARPA funds. So let me ask you another question. Are you, how much information do you have about the future of the lights?
Future of the lights, we do, I did get a quote from the president. And I believe the quote was between seventy-seven, eighty thousand dollars to repair all those lights.
To repair all the lights?
All the lights on Field Three.
On Field Three, but what about the entire complex?
Entire complex.
Which is a discussion City Manager that we've had about replacing all the lights in entire complex, correct? City Manager? So that is the ultimate goal. And I do recall that we came back to the City Council prior to Councilmember Otero. And there was, I made an attempt to use some of the funding for law enforcement, but obviously I was the only person that supported it. I was under the impression that there was not going to be enough funds for that, for that field. So that's why the City Council took the direction. But also want to acknowledge that as, and not only as a mayor, but as a coach, I think I agree with everybody here. When it comes to these kids, we have to do whatever we can to upgrade that field because at the end of the day, that's what it's for. So with that being said, we could not afford to just do one, one and just leave it as that. We felt that it was very important to do the entire field. So there is no missing ARPA funds. ARPA funds were then brought to the City Council and unanimously was voted upon. So that statement is incorrect. We will do everything in our power to try to help your organization, George. I hope you don't think in any way that we're not trying to. I just hope that you understand that there were some decisions that I cannot only make on my own. George, I'm sorry, but you've already had your time. And I'm not the only person that gets to make decisions up here. It is a collective, and we all have to make decisions. Whether I, I want to do one thing, it has to be a three vote at least. So I just wanted everybody to understand that. And I understand that that has been a concern, and I want that fixed as well. I think that we should, we should make it a priority. And that's why we've tried everything in our power to get these quotes for solar power and that initiative. And I think that will resolve not just one issue, but it will resolve the entire issue. And then let's not forget about the soccer field as well. We would love to also put lights in that field. So there's a lot of things that the City Council wants to do. But I just wanted to make, make clear that those are the real reasons why we are where we are today. And I will be voting yes to move this contract forward. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joe, I just had a quick question for you, sir. The bathroom upgrades that they were speaking about, were those purchased? And if they were, what happened to that?
They were, they weren't purchased. That's when the froes came to, to me, my knowledge, to hold that money back. So we're, they were in the process of being ordered with new, new sinks, a couple of urinals, and both men's and women's restroom.
Yes, sir. And just to sort of echo what the mayor said, I do also want to see those lights on Field Three replaced and eventually fixed, upgraded, make the facility safer. I have one that'll currently be playing on it, one that'll be playing there in probably two years. So my children eventually will play on that field at some point in time. Getting that fixed is definitely an issue that I want to see resolved. But there are other projects and facilities that need work as well. So with that, I do want to make my motion that we move forward allowing this contract.
Yeah, actually, Councilmember Otero has a comment.
So just to echo again, Field Three, my kids have played on this field. And for a very long time, it's very scary when that ball is out there and we can barely see it. And again, it just goes back to city maintenance, making sure that the city will help maintain with, you know, CYB upgrading, or I'm sorry, updating the fees and paying the necessary cost that it needs to the city. And Mayor, just for correction, nobody said that missing funds were, there was no missing funds. What I was sharing was that I don't want the public to be misled when it comes to funds, especially with like the ARPA funding when it came to projects and things like that. And I had reached out to our mayor and the city manager to try and figure out where this ARPA funding went for CYB because I was aware that, you know, and looking, listening to the previous meetings, there were certain things that were supposed to be done. So that was my biggest concern with city maintenance. But I did not mention that there was any missing funds. I would never want our public to be misled in any funding that is provided to our city.
Thank you. And of course, I would never want to put you in a bad light. I don't believe that they're missing or the public has been misled because it was just a decision that was made collectively. If it was up to me, trust me when I tell you, I probably would have put all the money towards CYB and maybe even more if it was all up to me. But yeah.
Thank you. And just one more thing to point out. I still don't know where the funding was kind of relocated to. So if we can figure that out in maybe the next couple of weeks, that would be really helpful. Or we give it back to CYB to get the maintenance done. Thank you.
ARPA funds have.
Unfortunately, yeah. They would have had to have been appointed already by December of last.
But it was. That's the problem is.
No, no, it wasn't. Yeah, it was, it was removed and unallocated to those projects. So since December has passed, it can't be relocated to them for additional projects that had money allocated that didn't come to fruition. December appointed.
Attorney, can you please explain how the ARPA funds work and why we had to, according to the federal government, allocate those funds to before a particular date?
I will defer to finance.
I'm sorry.
We have finance here, but I can, I can answer as best I can. There was a requirement and a condition in the use of the funds, there needed to be a legislative action to allocate, not to use them by the end of the year, but for an allocation by the end of the year. And any funds that were, that remained unallocated essentially were null and void and had to be returned.
And yeah, had to be returned, right.
But if they were allocated, then that money could be saved and used as allocated and approved.
And to finance? Where are we at? Oh, she's not here, I'm sorry. Well, never mind. Stuck with me. I'm stuck with your answer. Point of order, point of order, point of order, please. Jorge, por favor. Jorge, can you please, point of order? I said point of order, can you, you're out of line, sir. Come on, this, this just be, you're going to have plenty of opportunities in the future to communicate. I'm still talking, sorry. A point of order, please. And I know you're passionate about this, but you're, you're going to, okay. That's the last time I'm going to say point of order, please. A point of order, sir. All right. We're going to go to recess, five minutes. We are now back. I know that we kind of left off on some conversations. I wanted to make sure our council members still had any further discussions. Okay, and Martinez?
I'll make a motion to allow CYB to continue to use the fields and facilities with Blaze Sizzle and tournaments as they are now while we table this contract to have these items revisited.
Second? Roll call.
Can I make sure I understand that motion? Are you saying that this contract isn't, and go further, we're going to stick with the existing one until the review? Okay.
They'll still need a contract to operate. I know that opening day is this Friday. They still want to have games. They've still got things planned. So they'll still need permission to use the facility. So to continue to use the one that they've currently got, while we revisit this, fix these issues, bring it back and vote on it then.
So like, so the yes vote is to continue using that? A no vote would be to, to approve this contract, right?
A no vote would not, would be a no vote, and there would have to be an alternative motion to approve the contract as is.
Thank you.
Roll call.
And if I can also clarify, the items that are going to be revisited are those that Vice Mayor Martinez mentioned when the item was first opened. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I believe I sent Doug an email, and then I don't know if Resalinda, our council member, Vera, I apologize. There is a little bit, any items that weren't addressed, yes.
Okay. And the first was Vice Mayor Martinez, and the second was Mayor Lopez.
Before we vote, what are we voting on here? We're voting to table this or not?
The, the motion is for the current arrangement between the city and CYB to continue pending revisions to the contract, which will be brought back to the council for approval.
So if I, if I vote yes, we table everything, start all over. If I vote no, we go back to this resolution?
If you vote yes, it's to allow CYB to be able to continue using the field and everything as they currently are right now with the idea that the contract will come back to council. If you vote no, then in essence, the contract is terminating. So there would be nothing in place unless there is another motion to approve the contract and a vote to approve the contract.
Can I ask a clarifying question as well? Could you approve this current contract for like a certain time period and then revisit, you know, the contract again later to make revisions?
An alternative could be to approve this contract as it stands with ideally the concept to bring back an amendment to clarify outstanding issues at the next meeting and a couple of meetings in order to give the parties an opportunity to negotiate and discuss those. That could be an alternative as well.
Thank you.
Martinez, is that, would you be okay with that or?
I'll stick with my initial that you seconded.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
I support Daniel's motion.
Councilmember Otero?
No.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Hi.
Mayor Lopez?
Hi.
Motion carries three, two.
Moving on to item number fifteen. Who was number fifteen?
I was.
Was that you?
I was, thank you.
Okay.
So in regards to item fifteen, does the city have any current investments?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, did our elected treasurer have a chance to review the, the staff report? And did she have any recommendations or concerns? Thank you.
Any additional comments from members? I go out to the public, any comments from the public? Seeing none, what about online?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay, I bring this item back for motion. Motion. Is that, so you're not going to motion for this?
I'm sorry, I lost it on my agenda right here.
Just wanted to make sure. I usually try to forward the right of the person who pulled it, wanted the motion or not.
I'll motion to approve item fifteen on the agenda.
Thank you, I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No, I think that city treasurer should review it before it's voted on.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
No.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
I agree with Councilmember Casey and Otero. I believe that our elected official should have an opportunity to review this. So I'll also say no.
Mayor Lopez?
No.
Motion fails, one, four.
Moving on to the public hearing. There is a correction on the following attachments. Attachment A, the resolution has edits made to it. Red font and strike throughs represent the edits made. Attachment H, the presentation is now seventeen pages. With the new page seven, the updated attachments have been copied on a green sheet placed in the public agenda binder. Item number sixteen, A, resolution adopting the initial study of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-thirty-one housing element of the general plan. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have our consultant from E and C Planning Group, Anastasia Aziz. She will be giving a presentation on the housing element. Point of order for the city attorney, since the SEQA is part of the element, are they hearing both items? Or you want her to give the presentation and then they, you're, he just read A, but A and B kind of go together?
No, yeah, I was, I said A and B.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. So I apologize.
If I didn't, I meant it.
Okay. Anastasia is going to give the presentation on the housing element.
Thank you, Director Simulakis. Mayor and members of council, I'm pleased to be before you this evening to present the city's six-cycle housing element for your consideration. My name's Anastasia Aziz, and I'm with E and My name's Anastasia Aziz, and I'm with EMC Planning Group. This is a large policy document and planning document before you that has a lot of information in it about housing and new housing policy for the city to guide all different types of housing types and to diversify the types of housing within the city of Series. I did note that earlier you had a legislative update, which was nice from someone from the state legislature, but I will note that there is a lot of new state legislation proposed again this year on housing issues, and there have been multiple, multiple bills that have come down from the state over the past few years to address the state's housing crisis. So the agenda for this evening represents the long road that the city has had to get us to this point with this document. Should the city council adopt this document to send on to Housing and Community Development this evening, be the third jurisdiction within this county to do so after Modesto and Newman? So it's a significant achievement. I do want to say that the sixth cycle was much more robust process, if any of you've been involved with the fifth cycle or fourth cycle, it's a much, much more robust process with more analysis required and lots of information regarding the city and revisions to programs to ensure that the city complies with state laws and the housing is diversified. So I'll give a brief overview, this, the housing element is part of your general plan, so that is the document that you're seeing tonight. I'll talk a little bit about the regional housing needs allocation. The acronym is RENA, you may have heard that. Talk about housing opportunities within your city of Series. The key implementation programs related to housing and the related goals. The community engagement that has happened to date to ensure that the city residents have been aware of this particular program. The significant collaboration that we have had to have with the state, so Housing and Community Development, and the back and forth to make sure that they feel that the document is in compliance, it's called substantial compliance with state law, and the city down does have a letter that was received February 3rd from the state stating that this document, should council adopt it, is substantially compliant with state law, that's significant. The environmental review, which essentially states that the general plan, environmental impact report, is sufficient, and next steps to get the final compliance letter from the state. And finally, council recommendation. So the general plan overview, so as, some of you may have been involved in the city's general plan. The housing element is one of several chapters within the general plan, and the general plan guides overall development and planning within the city. So there are various chapters, the land use and community design chapter, transportation and circulation, agriculture and natural resources, health and safety, public facilities and services, economic and community development, and lastly, housing. And that is the one that we are proposing to amend this evening. So the housing element is required by state law, it's one of the only elements within the general plan that is required to be updated every eight years. So this is the sixth one to come before the city council. And again, I want to reiterate, and as you know, the city itself doesn't build housing, but the city does create programs and policies and regulations that can either incentivize housing and where it is built, and where it should go and how many units, or the city's rules and regulations can act as a constraint and hinder new housing development. So the city essentially like lays the table to facilitate or not new housing development. And I did want to state that in developing the, the inventory of land within the city, Series does have a lot of agricultural land surrounding it, and there were some sites within the city that are zoned agricultural land, but none of those sites are composed in the housing inventory. So there's no agricultural land in the housing inventory or under Williams and Act contracts, which are contracts that would retain the land for agricultural use. So that is not an issue with the city's inventory. So you've probably read over the years, and there's still many, many articles coming out about the state's housing crisis that is extremely expensive to live within the state of California. This particular county, Stanislaus County, has the Council of Governments, or STANCOG, which is the regional agency. And so how does the state allocate the city's or county's regional housing needs allocation? The Department of Finance does that, and they look at the state overall, they do forecasted projections for population and employment, and then they calculate out what they believe the housing needs are for the state as a whole, and then they drill down to the county level. So STANCOG here is, gets the allocation for the entire county. And so for this particular sixth cycle, 34,344 units were allocated to the STANCOG region, which Series is a part of. So it's the county in nine cities. And then within STANCOG, and probably one of you is on that board, I'm guessing, subdivides that number even more and allocates it in a public process to various cities, including Series, and it's voted on and adopted, and then the allocation numbers handed down to the city. And for Series, for the sixth cycle, which runs from 2023 to 2031, Series was allocated 3,361 housing units for this period. So just to give you a little bit of context, that's an increase over your fifth cycle of almost 1,000 units. So the fifth cycle that was completed at the end of 2023 had a RENA of 2,571 units. And at the end of 2023, the city had constructed approximately 3% of those units, or 79 units within that fifth cycle eight-year period. So that is an indication, if the, the state sees that not a lot of housing was developed, they can allocate additional units because the housing numbers or new construction has not kept up with what they feel the demand is. So I want you to get just some background and context for that. So this slide is penalties for non-compliance. There've been many newspaper articles and some court cases of cities or jurisdictions that have decided not to comply, but the Attorney General is taking these much more seriously than they have in the past. I think that's a reflection of the affordability crisis in housing within the state. So for cities that are not compliant, and currently Series is, is not compliant, the deadline for being compliant was December 31st, 2023. So the city is currently out of compliance, but we have a document here that will bring you into compliance this evening. Penalties can, the Attorney General can bring forward penalties ranging from $10,000 to $100,000 per month. Also, some of the local land use decision-making to the city can be limited and subjected to what are referred to as builders remedy projects. I don't believe there are any currently within the city of Series, but those can supersede zoning, local zoning laws, provided there are a portion of those units that are proposed that are affordable or deed restricted. But on the plus side, if a city is compliant, the jurisdiction is eligible for numerous additional sources of funding, like permanent local housing funds, SB1 planning grants, Cal Home grants, infill infrastructure grants, which I believe the city is taking advantage of, regional transportation funds, and then it could also unlock a new source of funding focused on housing called pro-housing funding, once the city is certified. So let's talk a little bit about household income and RENA. So when the city's 3,361 units were allocated, it wasn't just a, a, a full number, it was further subdivided into affordability categories based on area media income, which is the midpoint of an area's income distribution, where half of households earn above the median figure and half less. And the typical number that is used is based on a four-person household. So you can see here in this slide, we have, I'll start with above moderate income, which is mostly your market rate units. So the RENA for this, for the city to hit the market rate units is 1,505 units, which is about 40% of your total. Moderate income, some of which can be deed restricted, some of which are market rate is 661 units, or 17%. Low income and very low income, so these are the two income categories for residential housing that are difficult for most jurisdictions to achieve, and they're generally deed restricted. So low income is 50% to 80% of area media income, and very low is less than 50%. And so you've got 489 and 706 in those unit categories. And then I did just put, so what does that mean in terms of how much are people earning in those categories? We'll start down at the bottom, and this is for a family of four. So above moderate income, family of four, according to the Housing and Community Development Department, their 2024 state income limits, this was issued in May of last year, there'll be a new memo coming out in another month or two where these numbers are updated, but these are the current ones that we have. So above moderate income, a family of four has to make at least $111,100 to be considered above moderate income. Moderate income, family of four, $92,600. Lower income, family of four, $72,900. Very low income, $45,550 for a family of four. Extremely low income would be $31,200 for a family of four. And then this is a new income level that has been added, and I think will be in the next, possibly in the next income cycle. Acutely low income, $13,900. I think that's to capture many families or people that are falling into extreme poverty and homelessness. So where are the housing opportunities within the city of Series? So the areas that we identified with your staff, the largest area was the West Landing specific plan with 2,631 units. And again, you can see in some of our tables, those are not all above moderate market rate units, there are also a variety of incomes in, in there. And then Whitmore Ranch was also identified with 372 units. There were some vacant and underutilized sites, 234 units. Accessory dwelling units, we were also able to count about 131 units. And HCD does scrutinize those and the numbers that you, that they will allow you to count towards the projected RENA based on past building permit activity. So we had to demonstrate that there was activity regarding accessory dwelling units, but they can also be affordable in some of these income, income categories. And then pipeline projects, those that have already gotten their planning entitlements or are already in the building permit process. So that gave us a total of 3,673 units. And then this last thing, arena buffer, 268 units. So what is a buffer? So it's an additional units above and beyond the RENA. The state generally asks for a buffer of 15 to 30%. This city does not have that, it's much lower, because it was very difficult to find sites that achieved the parameters that the state would accept. However, the, the 8% is acceptable, it's lower for the very low and low income, and again, those are difficult sites to find. Generally, they have to be between half an acre and 10 acres and zoned for high-density residential development for the state to accept them for the lower income categories. And I just did want to touch on this law that's called no net loss. And so that means that, or requires that a jurisdiction's housing element ensure that there's a sufficient capacity of adequate housing development sites, that's sites that the city has zoned and ready for development for, for residential uses throughout this planning period, so the planning period is 2023 to 2031, to meet the jurisdictions or Series unmet RENA needs for each income category. Now, if one of the sites that the city has identified in the housing element for low-income housing gets redeveloped with above moderate housing or market rate housing, then the city will have to look and identify another site within the city that can be rezoned for high-density residential for the same number of units in order to comply with the no net loss law. So we looked at the programs in the fifth cycle and also noted that the city only achieved 3% of the RENA in the fifth cycle. So looked at those programs and, in concert with the staff, and revised them to try to remove constraints and sort of set the table for the city so that its residential development would be facilitated. And the goals that are in the housing element are facilitate housing production, improve the existing housing stock, so make sure that the existing housing remains habitable and doesn't fall into extreme disrepair, support opportunities for new and affordable housing and special needs housing, particularly housing for those seniors that may be on a fixed income, or those with disabilities that are on a fixed income, those that are headed by single-family households, farm workers, and those that are also in jeopardy of falling into homelessness. Also, another goal is to exemplify sustainability and energy conservation, again, that's to help keep the running costs of these new units low and affordable. And lastly, publicize housing needs and resources. The city does have, the city and the state and other agencies do have many resources available to lower-income residents, but many of them don't know about them or unaware of them. So that's another big item that the state is really trying to push, to have jurisdictions really get the word out on what some of these resources are that can help people that either have a housing, a house that is in disrepair, or they need rental assistance, or there's a wide variety of, of assistance available. So some of these key programs are slotted under those goals that I mentioned, I, I don't think I'll talk about all of them, but like, for example, Program 1.9 changes to the zoning code. As I mentioned earlier, many, many state laws have been passed in recent years affecting housing law and zoning codes, and the state is requiring each jurisdiction to update their codes to reflect state law so that it's transparent to you, council, members of the public and the staff, and it's very clear what laws need to be complied with. Another program is nondiscretionary approval for those sites that were identified in the fourth and fifth cycle. So this is a new thing in the sixth cycle housing element. The state is, is somewhat penalizing those cities that have identified sites previously for lower-income units, so those are the ones for the very low and low incomes. And they're stating, well, if these, you identify these, these didn't redevelop, so these need to be rezoned, so if a developer who's proposing at least 20% affordable units, they can have an expedited permit process. And they'd still, I think, come before a public hearing, but just for site plan review, there'd be no conditional uses, no conditional subjective findings that would be required. Also, Program 1.4, adopt approval findings for residential development, that's to remove subjective language that the state identified in the city's current findings, and they don't want subjective language in there when it comes to residential development. Program 3.1, I heard during public comment, someone mentioned diversifying the housing stock, so this is a program to try to facilitate. So this is a program to try to facilitate wider types of housing, like more multifamily development within the context of the city's height limits, but also diversified unit sizes, so that there are smaller sizes for those that may be single or larger-sized units that are affordable to large families or households. Affordable housing, water and sewer priorities. So the Public Works Department is and does have an active program, which is wonderful, to upgrade the infrastructure in some of the underfunded parts of the city. And then that can open up ideally more sites for higher-density development because the infrastructure can take the higher flows from sewage or higher water use. Reasonable accommodation. So that was another one, and the state is really focusing in on this. So this is for people with disabilities that may not be able to comply with the existing zoning district standards. This is a state law that they can come in and ask for reasonable accommodation or relief from some of those standards if they have a disability. There is subjective language currently in the decision-making or the findings in the city's code. So the state wants that subjectivity removed. I also want to point out, too, that there are programs related to, like I said, weatherization and energy savings to help those that are currently in a house but maybe on a fixed income and can't afford some of these larger ticket items, like a roof repair or a re-roof or new windows. There are programs associated with that. So it's getting the information out. And I do want to say that the city has done a great job more recently in investing in its infrastructure to get those additional sites available and ready to accommodate higher-density housing within the city. So the state generally does like to see housing units equally dispersed throughout the city and different incomes dispersed. This particular city, over 80% are in West Landing. That's unusual. However, because the city is investing so much in its infrastructure and other parts of the city to lay the groundwork for development in those areas, the state said that they would be, they're willing to find this in substantial compliance. So I do want to congratulate the city on directing those resources to the infrastructure and investing in the infrastructure so that higher-density development can happen in other parts of the city. So community engagement also forms a part of this housing element in the update. So we started back in 2023, where we introduced the council to the housing element and the community residents and elected officials. There's been a website dedicated to the housing element since that time, and a public review draft was released for 30 days and for comment. On August 7, 2023, there was a Planning Commission meeting, again, to let the Planning Commission know about this progress and to discuss the initial draft of the housing element prior to submission to the state for their first review. And the draft was updated based on feedback. And then on August 14, 2023, there was another council meeting, again, to engage people on the housing element as well and get feedback on the draft. And then it was submitted to the state for a 90-day review period. Throughout the whole time, now here we are, 2025. Throughout the whole time, there has been a dedicated project website on the city's webpage. Informational flyers have also gone out. City staff have tabled at local events to get the word out. And then there was also a stakeholder survey that was done, which is in Appendix E as well, that was also considered. Here's just an example of the flyer that was done in order to let people know what is the housing element? Why is it important? How many units was a city required to accommodate and how to stay involved? This is called collaboration with housing and community development. There's lots of back and forth with the staff at the state to find the document in substantial compliance. And this is the timeline. We started with the public draft that we submitted in September 15, 2023. We got their 90-day finding letters in December 2024. We revised it based on that letter, another 60-day review in July. And there were staffing changes during that time, so that's why there was a little bit of a delay. We did get another letter from HCD stating there's a few more things they wanted updated and changed, submitted the final draft. We had meetings in between all this time to make sure that this final draft that we submitted in January was the last one, we wouldn't get another letter. And February 3, we did receive their letter with the findings. That's in, the document before you this evening is in substantial compliance with state law. So CEQA was required with this. And I think that is, now that I say that, I think that's one of the proposed legislative amendments. I don't know if it'll pass or not, that these housing elements not be subject to CEQA. We'll see. I would like, I would like that. But this is currently subject to CEQA. So what, the CEQA path for this particular amendment was using the general plan EIR because there's no rezonings required to comply with the city's RENA. No general plan amendments. It's all staying as is with the general plan. So an initial study was prepared to demonstrate a determination of consistency with the general plan EIR. And I know that it's been brought up that some of the statements in the initial study may be, may need some wordsmithing, but the information was taken from the general plan EIR. And I don't think there's an issue in updating certain things like the police services. There are county pockets within the city, and they do have joint agreements. But there are, there are no housing sites within the county pockets for the cities of Series. So next steps, people. This was before the Planning Commission last week, where they did recommend approval. And so it's moved on to council for this evening, for your consideration. If council does adopt the document before you, it will be submitted to the state this week, early this week. We will get it into HCD for formal certification. And you should, the city should receive a formal letter from HCD within two to four weeks. And that will be put up on the city's website. And then the city will be in compliance eligible for all the grants and out of jeopardy from some of those penalties. But it does commit the city to all the programs in Chapter 2. And there are a number of them to do. So that's like the city's work plan to do through the next few years and through to 2031. And the state does require an annual report on the number of units applied for, entitled through planning, applied for building permits, and certificate of occupancy issued. And they really want to see those certificates of occupancies issued so people can be housed. They really want to get those units built. And that is, the city is required to submit a report to them every year to demonstrate work towards the goals. So with that, this is the Planning Commission recommendation that I said happened last week. And I will leave that with you. If there's any questions, again, I am Anastasia Aziz, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you on this substantial document, policy document and planning document for the City of Series. Thank you.
As city attorney, this is the moment where I open up the public. Okay. So the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? Members of the public, please. Welcome again.
Yes, once again, Milton Treewiler. This is a complex situation we're in here because we want to plan for the future. We want to make sure that our children and descendants have food to eat. And it just so happens that this is the best farmland in the world, and still they're asking us to build on it. So, you know, we should probably all go to the state and say, hey, we don't want to build anymore, or we want to build up. And that's what would probably be the best solution. Because again, the problem is that you don't, if you don't build up, you will be taking the best farmland in the world out of production. Yet we know we want to grow too, so we can grow up. And it's a very complex issue. I certainly agree with that. There's no question about it. And I agree that we're not going to solve it tonight, but we've got to think about it. Because if we don't think about it, I mean, I remember going down to Southern California in the 60s, and there were all kinds of orange orchards all over the place. They're all gone. And their farmland isn't anywhere near as good as our farmland because we have the water, the soil, and the climate. They don't have all that down there. We're going to fallow almost a million acres in this valley. It's not her problem. It's not your problem, but we're all faced with it. The problem is the state is making us do this simply because we happen to be here. In other words, they could say, okay, we're going to build near Tracy, which you can't, or in the Altamont Pass. You can't do anything over there with farming. There's no such thing as farming there. There's all kinds of farmland in California that can't be used. I mean, all kinds of bad lands in California that can't be used for farming. And so it's kind of a state-type issue, but how do you direct that to the state? So they can say, okay, well, we're going to save this. Again, you could use the analogy of Yosemite. Okay, well, we could build houses in Yosemite. What is their RENA, what are their RENA numbers? Well, that would be crazy, just like it's crazy to build houses right here. It's a crazy idea. But we're doing it because we're mandated to do it. And we've got to somehow solve it. I do have one particular question here because I, you explained the Program 1.11. So on the Program 1.11, does that have an Assembly Bill or Senate Bill number on it? Or is that a number that, is this a program that you presented? Or is this a state program? Or what is this program?
Make sure that all the, all the questions go to the council.
Right.
I just want, but I think if it's something that she can answer, it's not a big deal, is it?
Okay, well, I would like her to kind of explain where this 1.11 came from and how this, because it's an excellent program. The way she just explained it, if someone comes in here and says they will put in 20% low-income housing, they can put in 80% of something else, they can just go in and move in and do this very quickly. They don't have to go through all the regulations that they would normally have to go through. That's one way you would get, you would give them an incentive. You'll give your builders an incentive to build this high-rise stuff. What you could do as a council, you can raise the height limits of your buildings. I mean, you have the, you have, I saw a four-story, you know, you have the four-story hotels. You can make, you know, four and five stories. You can make it, I mean, I don't know if there's a limitation. Maybe you could ask her, if you wanted to make it six stories, can you do that? You know, is it possible just to say, okay, we want to make it six stories so we can get more people in here and save the farmland? That's what we're aiming at, saving the farmland. Once it's gone, there's no food. What are you going to do? I mean, we've got to think about our children and our descendants. It's not her fault, it's not your fault, but we just have to think about it, and we have to find a solution to this before all the farmland is paved over or built on and we create this food desert. Anyway, it's a major issue, and I hope that we all think about this seriously and that we plan, because it's like a cancer right now. It just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. It's going to just eat us all up, and we'll all be dead. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Anybody else? Anybody online?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay. With that being said, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussions. I know that there were some buttons that were pressed, but you think that you could answer Milton's one question on my behalf?
Yes, it's part of government code, currently 655-83.2 subsection C. I don't recall the Senate bill off the top of my head, but I can do, I can look into that to see. But it is currently incorporated in government code.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll go back to council. I'm sorry if I didn't see who was started. So left to right, Vice Mayor, lucky sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anastasia, I just had a couple of questions. Programs 1.1 through 5.5, by accepting this tonight, are those programs that we would have to, moving forward, offer? And then is that something, I guess maybe this would be a Leah question, what kind of stress would that put on staff doing these programs? Offering it, what kind of hours would it look like running that? I guess if I asked you, Anastasia, I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind answering my, mine first, and then Leah?
I can, I can answer the first part. So if you look at Chapter 2, think of it as the city's planning department, really. They'll be running most of the show there. It's their work plan or work program through till 2031. So I would imagine that the director would be looking at it and budgeting for it if they needed additional staff. And I think there are some, there is a program to have additional staff person just dedicated to housing to really move some of these programs forward and to do a lot of the outreach and to pursue funding sources as well that are currently available. If the city becomes certified, that can help fund a lot of these housing programs. So it is a work program. It will take time and effort on behalf of the city. And I, and the, I think it's incumbent on the director to plan for that annually through the budget process.
Thank you, ma'am.
Was there a second question to that or no?
There was, Leah, just asking if we had adequate staff, how that would look for you. But it sounds like there are programs we could utilize to get staff. Obviously, budgeting to make sure that we can run these programs. So she did a pretty good job answering Leah's question for me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tera.
Thank you. I just want to thank Leah and, I'm sorry, Anastasia for, you know, presenting this and working on this. There's a lot of pages in it. It's, you know, unfortunate that we have so many state mandates that come down to the local level because, you know, there's concerns with having the lack of services for all of these future developments. I mean, we need the police, the fire, everything else that comes with it. But when it comes to developing the new housing, the current developments that have already been approved, that's going to be counted towards this, correct?
Yes, there's, for anything that went through the planning or building process after 2023, I think that you can start counting of it actually as June 30, 2023, towards this cycle. So I haven't seen the numbers or the latest report, but yes, you do have at least 2024 that can be counted. And I don't know if the city, the city probably does want to count anything at the tail end of 2023 towards this cycle because it was so, you know, so few units were counted in the fifth cycle, and that's kind of done now, so.
Thank you. And then I know that there was a section, Attachment G, page 51. It stated something about the City of Series and the Sheriff's Office would serve those housing sites, but it sounds like, I asked our city manager earlier, and it sounds like it should say unincorporated housing, so. Thank you.
And we can revise that. I think that's an unsubstantial thing that can be revised. And none of the housing sites are located in the county pockets either.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Vera?
Thank you. And I appreciate the time. This is a very long document. And I just read it, I didn't have to type it. So I know you put a lot of work, both of you, into this. The one thing I did see that it did specify, which again is a little bit of the wordsmithing that you had touched on, it mentioned Series Fire Department, but we've been contracted with Modesto Fire for several years, quite a few years. And then one of the fire stations is actually a training station but can be utilized because it is on the way. because it is on the west side of Series, which is where West Landing would be. And I would think that we would either create a new fire station or utilize that one to service the west side residents there. I think, and I know one of our fire stations is actually not located in the City of Series. It's located on the outskirts in what's considered Modesto, but it's through a JPA because it's over, off of Picos. Which I know they probably know exactly what I'm talking about. Because it's actually not in city limits, although it does service part of both Modesto and Series and a lot of stuff on the freeway, I'm sure. I did see the sheriff area, but I think you already addressed that as well. When it came to A81, which is on our agenda pack at 987, it addresses the shelters. But like the host house actually isn't located at 1010 Street. It's actually, was in Patterson, but it closed due to financial mishandling. I also noticed the Hutton House was listed as on Genie, but it's actually now on Briggsmore. And it's part of, the house on Genie, which used to be the Hutton House, is now called the Two Gen House, which is for single parents. And this is their third year of operation as a single parent. And it also lists this Habitat for Humanity as an emergency shelter, but they aren't an emergency shelter that I'm aware of. At least now that I'm aware of. They do offer supportive housing services, but they don't actually offer emergency shelter services. Like I said, a lot of, a lot of reading here. And I guess we may, may not be applicable AB 2097 regarding the parking standards when they're within a quarter mile of a major transportation route. Because I know we do have buses in the area. And I know out by Series High School, we have the Farm Labor Camp, which is where some of these homes that you put in the schedule, I think it's 2021 and 22, are out there. And so there's a bus stop actually right in front of one of those. And so I didn't know if that was actually applicable into some of these zoning areas. You did mention something about not rezoning, but I thought the map for Service and Morgan had to be rezoned at the last Planning Commission meeting from a residential commercial to just, to become high-density housing? No, it wasn't. I thought it was item four on the agenda for the Planning Commission. So I thought that one was rezoned.
It's not, Neighborhood Commercial allows residential. So there was no rezoning. There's an overlay that said if those units, so in Neighborhood Commercial, if you choose to build commercial, you can build commercial. If you want to build housing, you can build housing. If you choose to build housing with this overlay and you build 20% affordable, then you get to take advantage of buy right development. There's no rezoning, it's an overlay.
Okay, because I know when we had met with the owner and a potential developer, some of those discussions were said, stated that they had to have commercial in there. So that's why that kind of came up from our discussions. I think the mayor and I met with the developer. And those were some of the things that he was told that he had to have commercial in there. Which is, but he wanted to partner and do low-income housing. And I believe the landowner actually wants to do veteran or senior housing there. But again, I don't know where he's at now because it's been a few months since we met with him. Trying to go through my notes here. And then on page 1097, when it actually comes to all the very low income on West Landing, that does bring me into some questions regarding income-wide segregation. Are we segregating just our low-income, almost like red, red line communities like we did back then? And then also bringing up to some of the concerns from the public regarding Farmland Protection Act and the Williamson Act, if any of those lands are actually going to be protected and not even going to be able to be utilized because of the Williamson Act and the Farmland Protection Act, which brings up to the gentleman's concerns as well about utilizing our farmland and utilizing those lots. And then one last thing, because I guess during the Planning Commission, it was mentioned that Waldo Rose was not part of the agreement, but it looked like it was highlighted in white and had a number 22. So I just wanted to confirm that that was not one of the sites. That we weren't looking at rezoning one of the businesses into low-income housing. And if that was, have we had discussions with them as well? And then for those that did ask, I did ask about how many homes would go on some of those lands because the one by the Farm Labor Camp is very, very small. It looks like it's one, less than, right about one tenth of a acre. So I didn't really know what could really be built on something that's not too big. But it looked like most of the other sites, with 19 being the one on my side of town, being the largest housing, but I just wanted to make sure that we were actually zoning and accounting it correctly when it comes to building the infrastructure into those homes. And that is all of my questions or comments.
If you have, if you answer those questions, make sure that microphone is right.
Yes, through the mayor. I'll answer some of them, and those I can't, I'll pass to the director.
No problem, I appreciate what you can. And I know I've already emailed the city manager, so he's already gotten this email. And there are a few other things. Only one other thing, which I think I didn't get a response, which was you had mentioned costs and fees for being late, and I didn't know how much the cost and if that was budgeted and if we've been fined and what our next step was.
Through the, through the mayor.
I think that's it for me, I promise. I think that's all four pages of my questions.
You got that right.
Councilmember, I do appreciate your review and your comments very much. So thank you for taking the time to do that. I'll, I'll double check the list of the shelters, but I thought that page was emergency shelters and other resources as well for lower income. But I will double check that as well. And Habitat for Humanity, I think, was listed in there because they do provide resources to build affordable units for those that are lower income and qualified, lower income qualified. But we'll double check those, those other ones that you mentioned. Again, this document has been in process for a long, for a couple of years, so things have changed. But thank you for pointing that out. AB 2097, so it's my understanding that in the City of Series, there aren't any sites that qualify or that are bus stops that qualify as major transit stops. That's another part of the legislation. So major transit stop is defined as two bus lines. It has to be two bus lines that intersect that have at least 15-minute headways or less. And so it's my understanding that there isn't a stop within this city that has two different lines. It can't be like the same line, some have, you know, bus line like 20A or 20B. It can't be anything like that, a family lines, two separate lines. However, what the city, what we do have, we do have a program in there to reduce some of the parking standards for multifamily development. Because as you know, parking is a cost, an added cost to residential development, particularly affordable multifamily. So if it is near a major, sort of a transit line, the city can further reduce those parking if the city council elects to do that. But right now, there is a zoning code amendment to reduce the parking for certain multifamily developments in certain higher-density zoning designations. And that will have to come back before you, before the council. So that's work that the community development staff will have to do and bring it before the council. And, you know, the council can further reduce those, those parking standards if it elects to do that. That is at your discretion, the council's discretion to do that. And then, yeah, in terms of West Landing, so Series was, this was a more difficult community because so much of the housing we're, the city's counting on in the West Landing. But there is a figure, and the state required us to do this figure, Figure 4.1, that shows the site's inventory by income designation. And so the West Landing area does have, and it's planned into it, a variety or mixture of land use designations, which would accommodate a range of incomes so that it doesn't become just a low-income enclave. I think when it was planned, and it's been in the planning process for quite some time, it was annexed a number of years ago and is part of your current general plan. And a range of incomes was accommodated there. So that is what, what the city's counting on. So it should be diversified, the income out at West Landing. And so it's, it's currently annexed, it's part of the city. And the areas where the housing inventory focuses on are not part of Williamson Act contracts. That was part of our process, this two-year process. We had an original housing inventory a couple of years ago, and then had to dig and found a couple of those proposed sites were subject to Williamson Act contracts that had just gone into renewal. So those sites were removed from the inventory. There's nothing on this inventory that's currently zoned for agricultural land or subject to a Williamson Act contract. Everything on this site inventory is ready to go if a housing developer, especially for affordable, wanted to come in and do that. And, oh, I'll just talk a little bit about, oh, the cost, the fees. So we had to look at the fees, and there are impact fees that the city charges like other cities and other counties in Stanislaw County. And currently, Series is about the middle when you look at other jurisdictions. And I think fees is something that a lot of jurisdictions do struggle with, especially impact fees for these expensive items like sewer infrastructure, water infrastructure, extending those things. There can be lift stations, they can be very costly. So that is something that the state is looking for cities to identify other sources of funding to offset some of those impact fees. Or I think there was, no, and then there was a new state bill that was just passed stating that cities cannot charge those fees until, or collect those fees, I'm sorry, until the certificate of occupancy is ready to be issued. So that is new, and that's another example of what the state is doing in addition to things like SB 2097 to reduce parking. But they're also looking at the fees now and deferring the fee collection until the very end because they want people in those units. And I do understand that since we started this, that the city's fees were updated just more recently. That was not reflected in this document. We were just focused on in the last year, those items that the state was zeroing in on in order to be efficient and judicious with our time. And then you mentioned the capacity realistic, so the term that the state uses to identify the capacity, there is a site inventory guidebook, if you want to Google that, HCD Site Inventory Guidebook. They use a term called realistic capacity. So the state does not allow a city to look at what the site size is, multiply it by the maximum density, and that is the number of units. They require you to discount that by at least 5%, sometimes 10%, sometimes 15% if there are topographic issues. So the sites that you referred to, I believe, were using 95% realistic capacity, which is still considered high by HCD. But we're discounting things like areas for utilities, driveways, sidewalks, because not the entire site can be maxed out with housing units. So there is that concept, realistic capacity. And that was vetted, the method we used and the number we used was vetted by HCD. And again, these are estimates. The city won't know until an application is filed by a developer what the actual proposed unit number is. But the city can try to work with the developer to ensure that there are the most number of units that are viable, that are constructed on the property. And I will pass it on to the director to address the bull.
Thank you, Anastasia. I know it's a very long document. I didn't type it, I just read it. So I threw in a lot of time, and I appreciate the work you guys put into it in answering my questions.
I think if I miss it, councilmember, let me know. The only outstanding item.
Would you mind speaking to the microphone?
The only outstanding question, I think, but if there's another one, please let me know, is the Waldo Rose site. I know the map is very hard to see, but in the staff report for the other item, the APN is listed, so I assure you, it is not the Waldo Rose site. It is south of Plauts. And so the way Anastasia just went over the unit count, we are combining sites 20 and 21 when we look at it to be, we consider it to be one acre. The Waldo, the site south of Plauts is site 20. And then site 21 is south of that. And so between site 20 and 21, there's about an acre of land, which is then how we arrived at getting, if you, if you use max density, that would have been 30 dwelling units an acre. But since we can't base on HCD, we anticipated about 26 unit. I assure you, it's not the Waldo Rose site, it's south of the Waldo Rose site. But it is just a small map. So I understand the confusion.
I appreciate it, but I was thinking in my brain, I'm like, well, that could easily be transitioned to affordable housing relatively quickly if they were interested. But that's why I just wanted to ask clarifying questions because the infrastructure is there in the event, and the county apparently has money. Although I don't know if Waldo Rose is interested. But that's why I was thinking in my head, like, is it or isn't? Have we talked to them? Is there something going on that maybe I could help on my SHA meeting-type conversations? But thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Any additional comments from the council?
Doug, do we have late fees? Or Anastasia, you had mentioned about late fees. For this being late, do we have late fees associated with this being almost two years behind?
Yeah, through the merits, my understanding, the city has not been assessed any fees to date because we have been actively working with HCD to demonstrate that the city is committed and making progress towards substantial compliance. And so your February 3rd letter demonstrates that you have a document, the city has a document now that is with, that is substantially compliant with state law. So the city's in the position to adopt this document and submit it and be in full compliance.
Thank you.
Councilmember Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question may be to the city. I understand this breakdown of homes, but how do we know that? How do we know we're going to get 706 very low-income units? What's the protection? Or the builder comes in and builds all these other ones first? That's one point. And early in the presentation, you mentioned that the City of Series, we're not going to go out and get agricultural land. But isn't Westland's specific plan agriculture? Just because it's into city limits and isn't part of Whitmore Ranch agriculture already? And because it's part of the city limits, we're not considering that? Is reaching out, grabbing agricultural land? Thank you.
Through the mayor, I'll, I'll address them, then you can, if I don't handle anything. So I believe the first part of your question was the breakdown of the homes and the income categories. So that is what Stan Cog does when they look at the whole number that the whole county has to comply with. And they use information from the census to look at income levels. They also look at what is the history or track record of the jurisdiction building the units in those income levels? And the city has to report annually how many units were built in each income level. So most very low and low-income new units come with something called a deed restriction because those developers generally use tax credits or other methods of financing that help lower the costs of the units. And the financing is generally, or the tax credits are generally through the state or the federal government, and they come with a 50 to 55-year parameter stating that those units must be deed restricted for these income levels for a minimum of 55 years. So that is how you would count them generally in those very low and low buckets. The state will allow, if there is accessory dwelling unit production, they have allowed in the past, cities to allocate in this area, 30, 30, 30, 10. So 30% very low-income units, 30% low, 30% moderate, 10% above moderate. That's how they've been allowing cities to parse accessory dwelling units without deed restrictions. They may be changing that, though. So that is generally how you figure out, or how a city figures out how to count the units when they're reporting to the state annually or when they're tracking them in the city database to see how many units the city has that are deed restricted and when those deed restrictions will expire. But it is difficult for cities to get those very low and low-income units. They generally have to work with and entice low-income developers or work with the county housing authority to do that. Most developers are market rate developers. And unless the city has a ordinance, and I'm just blanking on what is. what are those ordinances called? That require, that require, some cities have ordinances, I'm sorry, that require a certain amount of units.
Inclusionary housing.
Yes, thank you. Inclusionary ordinances. Some cities have passed those that require a certain number of units or a certain percentage of units to be affordable. So that's sort of a way to get the market-rate developers to do that. I don't believe Series has one of those, though, but that's a tool that some other cities use. So that's kind of how the income units, the income levels for the units are allocated in the buckets. And then you asked, and I'll take a stab at this, Westland and Whitmore Ranch, aren't they agricultural? Well, they're within city boundaries currently. So they've been annexed, I think, and pre-zoned before the annexation and then rezoned along with that for residential development. So they're already zoned for the uses, the housing uses that we have in this element. And those decisions were made by council many years ago.
Back to the low-income, modern-income. You know, the census, if I recall correctly, average income per person in Series is about $74,000. So, you know, we just, in my tenure behind the council, we approved some housing to be built on Hatch Road between Moffett and Central. And I think the price is like $400,000. So a $74,000 income to buy that house. I appreciate these numbers, but how do we make certain that it's going to happen? There's just no way, is there? The builder is the driving force? The city has no real control? Or we don't have some place that we can pull out of the hat to build a house that's affordable? Affordable to buy or affordable to rent? Is it two different things? Thank you.
Through the mayor. So affordability, just that last part of the question, covers both for sale and for rent. And so as I stated in the first part of the presentation, you're right. The city is not a developer, but the city does set the table with the regulations. So the zoning, and that includes height, parking densities. So the higher the density, and the lower the parking, just as an example, and the higher the height, you can get more, a developer could get more units, and they could be more affordable. And also, the city can have other tools, like I said, inclusionary housing ordinance. We didn't include that in the tools, but we did come up with a series of programs in Chapter 2 for this city to try to encourage residential development so that the city demonstrates to a wide variety of types of developers, both market-rate and affordable, to come look at Series, come look at these sites, come look at other sites, and develop housing here, a wide range of housing. Either condos or for sale, or for rent apartments, or townhomes. Or for those single-family homeowners, please, you know, build accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units so that the city can diversify its housing stock for a wider variety of unit sizes, types, and affordabilities. The programs in here are what the city can do to try to spur that. But it is also a lot of what council members will do or economic development staff will do is reaching out a lot to invite, you know, developers or affordable developers, come take a look at our city. It's a lot of outreach as well. And the city manager, I'll put the city manager.
No, council member Vera, you had another question?
I think, and it may not be directed at Anastasia, and it may be kind of more clarification. Now, if we wanted to do an inclusionary policy for development and maybe review our density bonuses, since it doesn't sound like it's part of the housing element, would that be a referral then at some point? Or is that something that we can include in part of this to see what we can do to attract development similar to the cities around us?
I think it can be included as part of the discussion here, but if it's a formal referral, that would be probably the cleanest way, yeah.
Thank you.
If there is no more questions?
Or just to piggyback, there is a policy. One of our policies is suggesting to update our state density bonus. So we're technically tasked to do that between now and 2031. So we do have the state density bonus updates to make it consistent as one of our policy action items. We will be doing that, we have to be doing that. We told HCD we will be doing that before 2031. But you could direct us to say, I want you to start with that.
That, and I guess the next question I would have was, she had mentioned something about an annual report that needed to go to the state. Now, would that come before council so we would see those numbers? Or would they be part of just like an informational report like we get from Public Works? Or is that something that we would have to request through this online program for public information?
No, we can, it's due every April 1st. I don't know how it's been handled in the past, if it's been brought as a council item or just, but we can, we're going to rush to get it done because April 1st is next week, but we will be, we can share that information with you. It's...
Yeah, either way, it would come before the council in one way or another, whether it's informational or it's something that would be approved by council to submit.
That's why I was just asking for clarification because I'm sure I'm not the only one on the council that has those same questions and wondering where we're at, especially if we have to report out every year and then the state's going to hold us accountable. And this report's due every eight years, and we're already, what, two years into it? I think all of us need to be held accountable to make sure that, as a team, we're all working together to achieve the goals that have been not only given to us and have been well-untold on what we need to do, but make sure we're doing what we can to be an advocate for our own city.
Thank you very much, everybody, for the questions. Thank you very much for putting all this together. Now we go back to the council for a vote, but the items do need to be voted on separately. So, council?
Make a motion to approve item 16A.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1.
Make a motion to approve item 16B.
Roll call, please. Actually, I'll second.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Motion, Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1.
Lastly, I will also make a motion to approve item number 17.
Actually, is that separate or is that?
Is that the ordinance, right? That's not...
Separate item.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have to go through the process.
I'm asking for that, yep.
Oh, no worries. Hey, we're with you. Okay. Item number 17. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Series, adding Chapter 43 Regional Housing Needs Assessment Overlay District to Title 18 of the Series Municipal Code. And Leah?
I'll make it quick. This is our first opportunity to help implement our housing element. The state basically said if you want to receive a letter of compliance, you need to take action on this item first. This is an ordinance basically saying that any sites that are been, there is a slideshow, you don't have to put it up, Fallon and, or Christina, we can. If there's any sites that are repeated from your fourth and fifth cycle, so basically from 2009 up till now, if you've reused any sites, you have to now implement a policy, so this is Program 1.11, that if somebody comes and wants to build affordable housing and they deed restrict 20% of those units, you will approve them by right. Basically, it will be staff-level approval. They don't have to go to a hearing. They'll be exempt from CEQA. So this is implementing and making these sites even more attractive to affordable housing developers by having this overlay. And so let's say we have sites from this sixth cycle, so between 2023 and 2031, that didn't get housing that were meant for very low or low housing units. They would just be added to this chapter. It's a chart. It just shows their APN, their zoning designation, their land use designation, and then the ultimate units that could be built. And we would just add on to that. Hopefully, we don't have to add on to it because we are going to get those units built. But if we did, at least we have the chapter, we have the chart, and each year, or every eight years, we look at those sites that didn't get constructed on, and we would add it to that.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to comment on this item?
This sounds like an opportunity where you could actually make it an incentive to build lower-income housing. And that's a great opportunity that you don't want to pass up because that's what we want to do, is we want to get people here without killing our food-producing land. So the more we can keep in the city limits and the more dense we can make it, the less we have to go outside of the city limits. So it would be a great opportunity for you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay, I now close the public hearing. Bring the item back to the council. Any comments and/or questions? There's no comments and questions? Looking for...
I will now make a motion to approve item number 17.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Moving on to council member referrals. Council members can request an agenda item placed on a future agenda pursuant to Chapter 2 City Council Meeting, J8 City Council Referrals. I see one button has been pressed. Councilmember Vera?
Just for conversation for a future agenda to discuss about inclusionary policies for development and density bonuses, if we can...
Okay.
Discuss that at a future council meeting when it's agendied.
Do we need...
Further discussion.
Do we need to open this up to the public?
No.
Okay. Consensus only? Consensus looking, yeah, look, we're good? Okay, we're good for that, sir? Okay. Any other council member referrals?
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
And the report, do I need to do a referral about the April 1st report about having that just part of whatever the policy they want to make it? As long as I get the information.
We're required to produce it, and so in either case, the council will see it. We'll make sure that you get it in time.
Perfect, thank you. I didn't know if I needed to put a referral, so we had a process in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Casey. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A referral back to the public request for information that it be made public in a different manner than we have now. You know, it was an hour and a half ago. I forgot exactly how it was, how to word that.
And that you're suggesting that it's something that we can do and it's...
Yes, it would be a change in city policy, but the council, we'll bring this item back for the council's direction on whether to bring it back for formal action.
Okay, looking for consensus from left to right or... Good. Yes, sir, go ahead.
There's no consensus needed, but can clarify what we're doing on the PRA? It's for public?
I remember what it is.
My understanding was that Councilmember Casey would like a mechanism to make Public Record Act responses available to the general public and not just to the requester.
And would those just be those that are submitted via next request? Because that's the only mechanism.
Right, that's, you were mentioning that, that's because of that, he was...
So right now, there's two ways that PRAs come in. It's contacting the city clerk's office directly and on using the software that was subject to the item earlier, right? So right now, there is no mechanism to allow the general public to see all of the PRA responses. So there is a mechanism to use the software to allow those PRA responses to go public, but there isn't necessarily the same, and Fallon, Craig, I'm wrong, way to provide PRA responses that are not filtered through the software in an easy manner. So the question is, is the referral council member to produce all of the PRAs or only the ones that are easily accessible through the software?
All of them.
Any more referrals? Seeing none? Now we go to reports. I have no reports. City council member reports, looks like Councilmember Vera has pressed her button.
I'm seeing if Daniel wants to discuss the Easter bunny.
No.
No, it's all right. So I will, I see Joey's still here, too. We had the Stanislas Homeless Alliance meeting a few weeks ago. The county does have some grant funding available, both from planning and helping with transitional housing. They were preferring older buildings, which is why I was very interested in Waldo Rose, and/or older buildings that possibly have the infrastructure because they do have some money and are willing to use. They have some deadlines that they need to use that money for. So they have asked us to look into our cities to see what we have available that the county may be able to utilize. And they also have some grant funding to also help with some of the planning in creating those kind of images and planning that's needed for the county. And then the Easter event's coming up on April 5th, 1 o'clock, here in the county community, here at the community center. And I look forward to seeing what Joey has in store because I haven't really looked at anything other than the flyer. So he's done, him and Jessica do an amazing job setting that up every year. So I look forward to another year and hope to see the community out here again.
Councilmember Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think March 29th is the anniversary of the Vietnam War coming to an end. I think maybe the first meeting in April, you could invite the members of the VFW to come and give them a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Casey. Anybody else? Looks like, okay. So with that being said, we will now adjourn this meeting and go to a conference with labor negotiators. California Government Code, wait, hold on one second. My apologies, I rushed it. Are any of our staff members have a report? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I know you guys want to go home, but...
Mr. Mayor, good evening, Mayor of City Council. I just want to let you know that the dog park at Neil will be closed for landscape maintenance starting March 27 through May 1st.
Great, I was just there the other day, but that sounds like a deal.
Yep, it's due.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you, everybody. Once again, I'll repeat it. We will now adjourn this meeting and go to the Conference with Labor Negotiators. California Government Code 54957. Agency designated representatives are city manager Douglas D. Dunford and the Human Resource Director, Delila Vasquez. Employee organization is underrepresented. The Chief of Police, Director of Engineering Services Engineers, Director of Community Development, Director of Finance, Director of Human Resources, Director of Public Works, City Manager. If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding to this item, thank you very much, and we will now go to close session item. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, and we will now go to close session item. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
方向已经被分配给 staff 了